Welcome, everybody. This evening, we will call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Mr. Davis, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm happy to lead everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Here.
Mayor Hepburn.
Here.
We will move to presentation. We are lucky tonight to have a presentation by the San Gabriel Valley Regional Trust, San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. The board chair and Claremont Vice Mayor Jed Liano will provide us with an update on San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust's accomplishments over the past year and plans for the next year. Jed, are you there?
You're on mute.
I see him, but I only see is not his name.
Hi, this is Brielle from the Housing Trust. Just one moment, Jed's calling me.
Thank you, Brielle.
Okay, Jed is receiving a message that he's not able to join because he's connected on another device. I'm not sure if anyone from the city council is able to send him a link directly.
We could, Mr. Russi is doing that. Let's see what we can do here, Brielle.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry for that.
No, no problem. Zoom is a thing that gets this speech changed, so I can't wait till it's over for this, for council meetings.
I almost thought we were going to start playing baseball with our practice session.
This is where Jeopardy comes in really good.
He apparently signed in on another device, so they're going to remove him from that device. Brielle, could you let him know that once they push him off to try and re-sign on?
Yes.
Well, there he is. Good evening. You're, there you go.
My apologies, Mayor Hepburn and members of the council. I'm so sorry for the technical difficulty. And when this is over, no one's going to be raising their fists higher than myself.
I know. No problems. Please, please. Welcome. Welcome aboard and welcome to our city.
Thank you, Mayor Hepburn. And it's my understanding that the city staff will be rolling my slides for me. Could we get those queued up? And while staff are queuing up the slides, I would just like to say how great it is to see all the familiar faces. You, Mayor Hepburn, members of the council. We work so well collaboratively on so many other agencies, but a specific shout out to Robin Carter, the Chair at Tri-City Mental Health, who does a great job running that board. And to all the people from Laverne, thank you for receiving me tonight. I'm happy to be here tonight on behalf of the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. Just want to share with all of you an update on what's happening in our agency and talk about some of the things we've been able to accomplish in just our first year. So if we could move to the next slide, please. So just a brief overview, the Regional Housing Trust was created by SB 751 to create a joint powers authority so that we can regionally, regionally and collaboratively leverage different funding sources together to help build affordable housing in our region. And why did it have to go to the legislature specifically so that we can combine leveraging public and private dollars? And at the time that this was created, we had 22 cities out of our 31 in the San Gabriel Valley. Now we have San Gabriel, so that makes 23. So we've now got 23 of the 31 cities in our region as members of the agency. Next slide, please. And so here's our Board of Directors, and I just want to give thanks to all of my colleagues who represent different jurisdictions throughout the region. And I was elected Chair at the first meeting, and the way that we have our board is that pockets of four to five cities are represented regionally by a representative. We also have some housing experts who have a lot of experience in the development of affordable housing. And to anybody who's interested in getting more involved in the Housing Trust, please reach out to me to our staff. Next slide, please. And so just to let you know about our first year's success, the Regional Housing Trust was able to be in grant receipt of $1 million from HCD as part of the local housing trust fund program to support 71 new affordable housing units in the San Gabriel Valley, specifically the Claremont Baseline Road Project, which supports 15 low and extremely low-income seniors, and the West Mission Project in Pomona. I'll note that both of these developments are in partnership with Tri-City Mental Health. And so again, another good example of regional collaboration. We don't see these as Pomona units or as Claremont units. These are regional units, and we're all putting in capital, and we should all be able to make them available to our residents. Next slide, please. Those two projects are not the only ones that we have prepared. We've got a pipeline of 18 projects that represent over 1,000 units. They're spread out throughout the San Gabriel Valley, and they represent a different assortment of housing need. There's housing for veterans. There's housing for seniors. There's housing for families. There's housing for single adults. Next slide, please. What I'm really excited about is the funding request is big, but what we've been able to create in this pipeline here is a very diverse mix of different kind of housing opportunities in different communities, and also, and more importantly, at different scale. You'll see we have some developments with nine. We have some developments with 140. We're trying to take on all sorts of different diverse housing stock because when it comes to affordable housing, one size doesn't fit all. So next slide, please. And so we don't want to only just think about affordable housing in the traditional sense and what you think of as a tax credit project. We also want to be forward-thinking, always looking at new opportunities on how to handle affordable housing and homelessness. One of the things that we're investing in is a tiny home shelter program. We learned from the pandemic that congregant living situations are really difficult when you have a health emergency. And so now what's becoming very in vogue is to look at the possibility of tiny home shelters. These provide immediate interim shelter, but if there was a need to have separation and social distancing, we can accomplish that. And if there were another health emergency, we're prepared for it. We're currently in conversation with a number of different site locations, and we look forward to this being one of our many innovative programs. Next slide, please. And we want to keep moving forward. We don't want the funding of affordable housing only to be what you think of in your mind as affordable housing, a tax credit project, X number of stories, X number of units. We want affordable housing to mean a lot of different things, and that can mean ADU production. That can mean first-time homeownership programs, ways to get people out of rentals and into wealth accumulation, home equity, starting to save and have assets based on homeownership. We also want to be the place where different ideas come forward. So we want to create a housing incubator. And we also want to find out what resources we have, not just in dollars. See if there's surplus land opportunities that give us the chance to create affordable housing opportunities for all of our communities. And so I believe that's my last slide. And Mayor Hepburn, I hope I may have won an award for the fastest PowerPoint presentation in front of your city council's history. I know you'll appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure we got a chance to tell all of our members what's happening at the trust, and we'd love to either hear your ideas or just take any questions you have about what we're up to.
I first appreciate you coming, and this is a very serious issue, and it runs across the gamut of every state in the Union that's having housing, you know, housing shortages and homeless. But I do appreciate, especially your group of talented individuals, which I know many of them, and it's to the core of their heart where it comes from, and I think that's so important that you can't do anything like this unless you really have it in your heart, and it's just a focus on your life to help other people. And you guys have done an unbelievable job. And not only that, the biggest thing is we know how Measure H funding is kind of, it's tough to get, and we're reaching beyond that and doing extremely successful. And I think it has to do with, you know, I'll just tout it, the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments and the focus with, you know, the 33-plus cities and the municipalities that we have that really focus on that, and it really helps a lot, I mean tremendously. But thank you very much. And yes, your presentation was wonderful. We really do appreciate that. And you do so much. To condense it in that, it doesn't do it justice, but for all of our communities around us, we really appreciate what you guys do, and you have our full support, as you know. So does anybody have any questions for Vice Mayor Liano? No? Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate your time. And to everybody else, we said hi in Claremont, and you never know, you might see us at a restaurant, you know.
Likewise. Thank you, Mayor Hepburn. Good night, everybody.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We have some announcements, Mr. Russi, regarding the Chamber of Commerce. Is that correct?
Yes, we do have one, and I'm looking, and Leah is not on there at this time, so I'm going to go ahead and take this for them. Laverne Chamber of Commerce with the City of Laverne and Benita High School are sponsoring a community yard sale on Saturday, July 31st. It will be from 8:00 to noon, and it'll be in the Benita parking lot. This year will include a health and fitness expo with health and fitness professionals, practitioners, services, and product providers will be on hand to educate on the multitude of health and fitness practices that we can benefit from in all stages of life. There's no admission, and everyone is invited to browse, shop, and think fit. There's space available for purchasing through the chamber. If you would like to make contact with them at their office at 593-5265, or visit lavernechamber.org for more information. That's it.
Thank you very much. I just want to say on behalf of myself, and I think I have the council's support on this, that the Chamber has done an outstanding job, and I think that they have assisted our businesses to survive, actually not only survive but thrive. And I think that's the kind of thing we want to say is survive and thrive because, I mean, this pandemic hit us all very hard, and I think our businesses have just, you know, with the Chamber just, you know, marketplace and all the different things that they've been sending out and all the different functions and special nights for different, you know, restaurants, they've just done an unbelievable, unbelievable job. So thank you to Leah, and thank you to all the board. And actually, we have this Thursday, we have the incoming board coming in. I think, Mr. Davis, you're going to be there with me on that, and we're going to be swearing in the new board, Chamber Board. So thank you, Mr. Russi. We move to consent calendar. Has anything been pulled, Mr. Russi, off the consent calendar?
It has not.
It is not. Are there any questions or anything for staff?
See if anything came in. Sorry.
Please, please.
Nothing received to be polled. If I remember correctly, was there a conflict of interest with some of the items for?
There was one for Councilmember Carter regarding the Assessment District. Only one.
Yeah, and we're just setting the public hearing for your July meeting on that.
Oh, being that said, did we have any questions or anything on the consent calendar? If not, like a motion?
Don't move.
Mr. Davis, first, we have a second by Mr. Crosby. Roll call, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau.
Hi.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes, all except for item number six.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Hepburn.
Yes.
Thank you.
We move. We go to... And now we go to, just one second, please. We go through public hearings. Item number seven, Mr. Russi.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is your annual hearing for your utility user tax, and Interim Finance Director Mark Alvarado will be giving that presentation, and I think he is on there now. So with that, Mark? You're muted. Still muted.
He's still marked, though, but he's muted.
He is. There he is. Okay, Mark.
I was just trying to get my picture on the screen.
Good evening, Interim Finance Director Mark Alvarado. How are you, sir?
Wonderful, wonderful, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the city council. Very briefly, tonight, this is the annual public hearing to continue the city's utility users' tax. Ordinance 955 approved in the late 90s and reaffirmed with the changes in 2005, sets the rate at 6% for the UUT tax on electricity, gas, telephone utilities, with discounts for applicable senior housing complexes and et cetera. Every year, we need to go through this process to make sure that this revenue can be continued into the new budget year. The estimated revenue for 2021-22 is estimated at $2,856,000. All of that money is being programmed into the budget, and there is no anticipated surplus of any of that utilities users' tax for the fiscal year. So based on that, the city is requesting that the tax be continued for the next fiscal year. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Alvarado before we go to open up our public hearing? Nope, seeing none. We will open up the public hearing. Jared, do we have anyone to speak on this issue from the public?
Just checking to see if there's any hands raised. I see no hands raised, and we have not received any emails to speak on this item.
Okay, we'll wait a few seconds, and then we'll move over to public hearing. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll bring back to council. Do we have any questions for Mr. Alvarado's counsel? I seeing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to maintain the city's UUT at the current voters' approved rate.
That's a perfect, we have a second.
I'll second.
Councilmember Lau, roll call, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau.
Aye.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Hepburn.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We move to item B, City of Laverne's 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan Urban Water Management Plan. Mr. Russi.
Yes, this item will be handled tonight by Public Works Director Sean Igo.
Mr. Igo, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Public Works is requesting a public hearing to allow for public comment regarding the draft 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and subsequent approval of the plan. Although the draft, and all this is a 2020 plan, legislative updates have pushed this out to the current year, putting it in 2021. This happened also last time, pushing the 2015 out to 2016. There are several items covered in the Urban Water Management Plan, including an overview of the water system, water use, and water system reliability. The plan presented tonight is an update to the 2015 plan, which provides more emphasis on water conservation programs and water shortage contingency planning. This is a requirement based on the California Legislature, which established the Urban Water Management Plan Act. Urban water management plans are required for every urban water supplier that provides water to 3,000 or more customers or provides over 3,000 acre feet of water annually, of which both apply to us as the City of Laverne. These plans are updated every five years and provide a 20-year look ahead. The updated plan will assist in ensuring long-term water resource planning and adequate water supplies are available to existing and future customers. With that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Igo before we go to open our public hearing?
I just have, I guess, one, and that is, and maybe I was reading the draft that it was based off of, but I just wanted to make sure that our new Public Works Director Sean Igo was going to be listed versus our retired Dan Keesey in the document. Is that going to be the case?
That will be the case, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Igo? We'll go to, let's open up public hearing. Jared, do we have any, first, I want to speak on public hearing on item B.
Just refreshed the email. We did not receive anything via email, and there are no hands raised, sir.
Wait a few seconds, and then we'll... Seeing nobody for public hearing, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move to council. Any other questions for Mr. Igo before we go to a vote? Then we will go ahead, and I need a motion to, a motion by Mr. Davis to approve. Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
I'm happy to recommend that council approve this very thorough and complicated document that will prepare us in the case of a water emergency. And I say that because, in all earnest, the water is the most important thing to us. So this is, while it's long and hard to read and lengthy, it's a very valuable piece of work. So thank you, Director. So I move that the City Council approve Resolution Number 2138, adopting the City of Laverne's 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Aye. Thank you, Councilmember Carter. I just want to say, too, that, you know, a lot of these things you read, you go, oh, but you realize that this is a vast document that carries the water for our whole community, as Mr. Davis had said, that it's pretty important, especially our monitoring, especially where we are and our wells and how we function and how we work with other agencies. It's pretty intricate, and it's one of those things that requires a lot of attention and a lot of other people involved with it. So thank you. I do appreciate that. And yes, Mr. Igo, we'll make sure that your name is on there, correct?
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
Being that said, I have a first and a second. Roll call, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau.
Aye.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Hepburn.
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to other matters. Mr. Russi.
Yeah, this is the public hearing for your refuse rate increases. As you know, we have advertised those out as required by law. There will be a presentation. There is a request by Waste Management to, there are three levels of increases. There's the CPI as permitted under the contract. There is also green waste increase that is a result of some changes in how much can be diverted. And then the third will be the organics, which will be anticipated for implementation in January. So with that, I don't think I took away Tracy's thunder, but she is here to give you a much more thorough presentation. So Tracy?
Thank you, Mr. Russi.
Good evening, Ms. Costello.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Laverne residents. I am here tonight to present a brief overview of the proposed refuse rate increase. As Bob Russi said, there are three components to the proposed rate increase. A Consumer Price Index, which would be effective July 1st. AB 1594, or a green waste increase, which would be effective July 1st. And SB 1383, or the organic food waste service increase, which would be effective January 1st of 2022. Section 17.61 of the Waste Management Agreement allows for an annual review of the refuse rates and an adjustment of the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. The formula used is the All Urban Consumer Garbage and Trash Collection U.S. City Average. This year, the CPI is 3.49%. In 2020, Assembly Bill 1594 went into effect. This bill no longer allows for diversion credit for green waste that is used as alternative daily cover or ADC. Approximately one-third of all green waste in Southern California was used as ADC. As a result, green waste costs increased from $46.96 to $81.37 per tonne over the past year and a half. This increase results in a $1.75 per month increase to residential service. Also, it's worth noting, waste management has absorbed the increased cost for the past 18 months due to Assembly Bill 1594. Effective January 1st of 2022, SB 1383 will go into effect and requires all cities to mandate residential and commercial organic or green waste composting. It's very important to understand that when SB 1383 goes into effect, the demand will far outweigh the capacity available for organic waste disposal. Currently, there are 148 composting facilities that process green waste, and only 19 of those are permitted for both green and food waste. Waste Management acquired the South Valley Composting Facility in Jolair, which is fully permitted to accept all organic material from Laverne. Once again, all organic material from Laverne. The cost to add a food waste program beginning January 1st of 2022 results in a $1.77 per month rate increase to residential services. If Laverne does not pass a proposed SB 1383, organic waste rate capacity is not guaranteed and could cost much more in the future due to higher demand for organic waste disposal capacity. Also, Laverne runs the risk of not having organic waste disposal capacity, which could result in non-compliance fines by CalRecycle. Before I discuss the residential and commercial rate comparisons, I'd like to mention that at the 14 cities surveyed, only two have incorporated SB 1383 compliance measures, Claremont and Laverne. In comparison of residential rates of surrounding cities, the total rate increase remains below the median for comparable services. Rates range from $35.82 to $23.18 per month. Laverne's rate at $26.80 is $1.93 below the median rate and in the bottom 30%. The, excuse me, the proposed commercial rates are just slightly above the median for comparable services. Rates range from $252.4 to $126.17 per month. Laverne's rate at $1.8522 is $1.23 above the median rate. The total number of notices mailed or provided to all refuse customers was 8,360. The number of valid protests required to prevent adoption of the proposed refuse fee is 4,181. As of the deadline of the public hearing, we have received two written protests. In closing, staff recommends that council open and conduct the public hearing, receive all written and verbal testimony regarding the proposed fee increase, adopt Resolution 21-39 declaring the results of the proceedings for adopting the refuse fees, and if no majority protest exists, adopt Resolution 2140 approving a rate adjustment for refuse service provided by Waste Management to be effective July 1st of 2021 and January 1st of 2022. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Costello. And I want to say first that I would really appreciate this. A lot of work. And I, you know, that 1383 is definitely a moving target that continually changes. It's in the news a lot, so that dynamic we're moving through. Of course, AB 1594 is done, so obviously that's part of the deal right now. Do we have any, thank you, I do appreciate you and your staff. This is a lot of work, and I know it's been difficult, and it's, like I say, continually moves. And it's not over by any stretch. It is not over. So especially with organic and green waste coming to be such a forefront and the disposal of it. Do we have any questions for Ms. Costello at this point?
I have a few questions, but probably after public comments.
And if that's okay, we'll go ahead and to open the public hearing. Uh, JR, uh, let's open the public hearing. JR, do we have anybody for public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I don't see any hands up and we have not received any emails to speak. We did receive some emails that were included, um, and sent to you this afternoon.
Okay, JR, there's a hand raised.
I don't see it. Oh.
Mr. Bowen.
There we go. Mr. Bowen, good evening.
He's muted, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bowen, we can't hear you. You are muted.
Sorry, um, apologize for that. The young lady that just made the presentation, is she, uh, Laverne staff or is she, um, Waste Management?
Ms. Costello is staff.
Okay, so I have a question. Uh, two years ago, with about two years ago now, the city extended, um, their con- Waste Management contract for ten years on a no bid basis. And the reasoning, uh, from various people has been, well, if you put it out to bid, uh, your prices will go up, which is category, categorically untrue. But, so my question is this, the CPI number that she quoted, when they offered the ten-year agreement, the extension, uh, they changed the CPI from the, the national standard normal CPI to this trash collection CPI. Is that, is that, uh, correct?
Yes, Ms. Costello, do you want to answer that? Is that something you're comfortable with?
Yeah, no, it was, there were two CPIs. It was this one and then there was an all urban consumer Los Angeles Riverside, Orange County. And that CPI was discontinued in December of twenty seventeen.
Well, but actually.
By Waste Management, not by the city.
Well, the contract changed it and I guess I could go back two years ago or, and, and show you that the contract was a change in the CPI calculation. So basically you've gone to a different CPI that is what, two points or three point seven this year?
There were two CPIs, one of which was discontinued, leaving one CPI.
Yeah, so the new one this year.
The same one that was always in existence?
No. They used to use the national CPI. It was part of the agreement when you change the agreement, if you go back and look two years. My, I'll rest on this, that you did a ten-year no, um, bid agreement. And then the CPI changed and we're getting hit with almost a four percent CPI when the national CPI on general goods is about one point seven. So everybody should know, um, that when you change these agreements, it sounds like no big deal at that point, but this is exactly where we end up with higher rates because of the change in a no bid agreement. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any other? We're still in public. Public hearing.
No hands are up, sir.
Well, we'll wait. JR, anybody else?
Uh, none of them received, sir.
We'll give it fifteen seconds and then we'll close the public hearing. We'll go ahead and close public hearing and move to council. Counsel, we have any comments or, uh, questions for staff?
I have a question I'd like to ask Tracy, if I may. Okay, Tracy, on, um, page one eighty-four of this report. My question is if only two cities, Claremont and Laverne, out of the fourteen cities have incorporated some compliance measures into their, uh, rates, do they all have to by January twenty twenty-two?
This is a statewide compliance mandate, yes. Um, I can't found any service provider would provide organic service for free. So I'm making the rude assumption that that would include, uh, a rate increase, yes. This is statewide.
Mr. Crosby.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, uh, Tracy, is there a way that we could put on page one eighty-five, the comparison chart up? I know we've seen it. I want to make sure that the public has view of that as well. Um, you referenced it, uh, uh, with the median rate of twenty-eight seventy-three and where the difference of, of, of one dollar and ninety-three cents, uh.
I think Tracy wouldn't be able to, but I think, uh, JR has that ready. Should, uh, you be able to share screen, JR?
And my, my question, um, and highlighted, as you stated, Tracy, is that Laverne and Claremont were the only cities that have put in the, the green waste, uh, 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 pieces, correct?
That's correct. Uh, it's, it's actually the organic waste that I'm referencing under SB thirteen eighty-three, but it's a green waste slash food waste.
Where, where the state, uh, is making us do this, but didn't give us any funds for that, but requiring us to do this, as I commented last time. I love when the state does that. Um, uh, and so this twenty-six eighty, that includes all of, uh, our, our rate increases or just the, the first one?
And this, uh, twenty-six eighty is the final total rate increase. It includes all three of those, uh, components. CPI, green waste and organic waste.
So as, as Councilmember, um, Carter just said, most likely if they're not starred, they're going to be going up uh, because of, of, uh, regulations that they have to do, right?
Very safe assumption, correct.
And thank you. Um, I appreciate, uh, what the city has done and to keep our rates low, lower than all the other ones in, with including these, 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 these increases. No one likes increases. I, trust me, I, I, I get that, but I appreciate what the city's been doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby.
Any other questions for staff? Um, just a couple of comments. Uh, Ms. Costello, uh, who is that young lady sitting next to you, Ms. Costello?
I have the privilege of having Terry Muse here with me. She is with Waste Management.
Good evening, Ms. Muse. I just wanted to say hi and let everybody know who you are and you are representative of Waste Management. Um, just a, a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Um, there, the cart, I had a email from someone, I think we all received it regarding the cart replacement lost or damaged. They were pretty upset. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, if your barrel is damaged, um, it, you don't have to pay for that. There's a replacement there because the damage of it was made by, it was made very clearly, it'll pick up and drop off and drop down. They usually do get damaged over time and they break and they crack. What, what is that? Um, can you kind of, uh, explain cart replacement lost or damaged, uh, what that means to a resident? If it's natural wear and tear, they're going to replace it. If it's not wear and tear and it gets stolen or whatever, what's the responsibility of the resident?
So if it's natural wear and tear, it's replaced. Uh, the city and Waste Management work closely. If, um, Waste Management suspects that there is, uh, in a, a use which is not intended for, sometimes people use it to haul bricks across their yard or whatever. If there's some.
Never, never.
But if it's just normal wear and tear, I can tell you in my six years, I have not charged that fee once. It's there really for gross abuse of the carts and, uh, that is normally determined based on, uh, both city and Waste Management staff conducting a field survey.
To make it clear, if it's damaged due to just normal wear and tear, they're going to replace it. They're going to come out, replace it with a new barrel. Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing I had, and this is, uh, I'm going to direct this to Ms. Muse, is the fact that, uh, I know that during the pandemic, um, there was a problem with some barrels that needed to be replaced and the pickups weren't rather timely. And I, I know we had to make some calls. Uh, understanding your situation and COVID and everything else, but I think we, we must make sure that our residents get, uh, you know, service that's at least on a quick, quickly. Understanding if you have no product to bring out there because of shortages, I understand that, but we need to let our staff know that, so we let our residents know that. But if our residents continually call over a two or three week period and they don't get picked up, that's, it's a concern of mine to make sure that, you know, our service model is taken care of as far as that. So we can get some assurances on that because there were some issues. Um, my other one was the fact that, um, I know that Mr. Keesey, when he was in, in, uh, as a public works director, that we had, uh, it was something that I brought up. And I think we as a council agreed to it was the fact that on the large roll-offs for our alleys to pick up large items on a, uh, monthly basis, or I can't remember the contract I read and I can't remember what it said. Mr. Russi, you're shaking your head, yes. So, um, I think now that COVID is, um, is moving on, I think that we need to seriously think about that because if you travel through our alleys, it's starting to, I should say, build up a bit. And I think there's issues with, with fire and damage to residences. And I think that's something if we could look in the very near future to start that again and let the public know that and hit, you know, obviously it's going to be different streets at a time because there are objects out there that need to be removed. Those are, as we know, some of those streets are actually really roads. They're just short roads. So, and that we need to address that if we could.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but I think it's once a quarter that we were doing these alleyway cleanups. Was that what was included as part of the extension?
Contract, I know that, I saw.
It was, it was quarterly and that was, that was actually put on hold by city staff, uh, just based on it, we kind of, COVID hit us pretty hard and quickly and we just didn't want to have any, uh, situation where we weren't social distancing. So that's something that, uh, my staff and I will certainly work with Waste Management to get up and operational.
No, understanding that, but I think it's real important that we move forward with that. Uh, Mr. Crosby.
I'm sorry. Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, during, during COVID too, I, I feel I know this answer. Phil, I'm giving you a softball. Uh, trash pickup, uh, how much more than pre-COVID pickup did we actually do?
Um, you know, I don't have the actual figures with me. We definitely had an increase in bulky item pickup and, um, also in trash pickup. Uh, I could give you those figures, um, like some other time, but you know, people were home, they were cleaning out their closets, their garages, and we definitely saw a huge increase in bulky items particularly. And the trash is what people work at home, they're generating more trash. So we definitely saw an increase. Specific number, I am happy, but I can always get those for you.
Thank you, please.
And then, I mean, and you've heard me before, Ms. Muse, that, uh, I was less than satisfied, not only for our residents, but for our staff and regarding pickup, understanding COVID, but I think it was a good lesson for all of us. As this, as anything happens and we can see it at the light at the beginning of the tunnel, we need to alert everyone on our staff and our residents, actually staff through our residents to let them know when we're going to have a disruption in service. I think it's very important because of the fact that, uh, you know, again, the model of Waste Management was once a week on Mondays, you pick it all up. But, you know, COVID snuck up on all of us, but it wasn't a surprise. COVID was hitting us in February, hit us March, April, complete shutdown. So I just, I was very dissatisfied with that. I was dissatisfied for the fact that our staff had to deal with it, especially when they were dealing with their own COVID-related issues with shutdown in our city. And I think it's very important as one of our largest vendors. And, and you know, my, my, I do believe in competitive contracts, as Mr. Bone has stated. But as a vendor, we must notify, we must inform, better to inform than not surprise. We don't like surprises. Our residents don't like surprises. So I would appreciate it if we, we continually communicate quickly when there's an issue or a stoppage or a slowdown. Uh, because it's so important to, to all of us. Especially for council too, that we get a lot of phone calls from people and saying, why haven't they been picked up? What's our trash? What's going on? Especially during Christmas time. It was a series of unfortunate events, but I think moving forward, we need to make sure that, that you notify us, please.
Definitely learned a lot of lessons, definitely through that.
Right, right.
Our customer notification, we definitely have, you know, we were able to identify some parts, some weak parts in our, our notification system. So we, we improved those. So hopefully we never have a situation like this again, but we've definitely learned a lot of lessons through it.
Yeah, I think also in the fact that some of the information that went out was very confusing for our residents and there, there's nothing worse than have confusing information going out and then our, our staff has to spend extra time when they really don't have it to, to simplify what's going out and make sure that the residents know what's happening. So on that end, um, also, um, Ms. Costello, if, if this passes tonight, uh, on the, uh, SB thirteen eighty-three, um, understanding where we're going with the green waste. If you could please, and I know there's dynamics in the state right now that's changing, and I think one of the reasons why the, um, a lot of the other cities haven't jumped on is they're waiting for a change or waiting for a reprieve. And, and while I commend you for at least getting this motion going and less getting this forward, I think it's very important that, yeah, we move forward with it. But if you could please notify us around the November time to let us know where we're at for our council and for our city to know where we're at. If, if there's something that comes up that they make a reprieve, we can cancel this increase before we hit the January twenty twenty-two, if we could do that.
Okay, I'd be more than happy to come back and give a, an update in November.
Counsel, are you okay with that? I just thought that's something we probably want to look at and, because it is, the dynamics are changing. Is that okay with everybody?
I, I think it would most likely be a postponement or a, or a modification, not a cancellation, but.
Let me, yeah, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I, I appreciate your optimism, Mayor, but that train is coming down the track. It just may slow down a bit.
Let me, let me rephrase that. There is no cancellation. It's just maybe buffering the effect that we're going to be hit and it's, we are going to experience this for many years to come. And I do agree. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I'm just trying to make sure to help the message be straight so that it's not confusing to people.
I got it. Uh, thank you. Appreciate the clarification. On that note, um.
Well, actually, I, there are a couple of comments I, I was hoping to make, but I didn't know whether we were still in question mode or comment mode and.
Question and comment, we'll go ahead.
And so the couple of comments that I'll make are, um, yes, for a while the CPI was trailing or a little under two percent. But if you look closely at the Athens contract that is also up for renewal, the Athens contract is based on CPI and that CPI increase is three point six one. So this CPI that's being used by Waste Management is currently less than the general CPI that Athens is using at three point four nine percent. And, and while some folks made argument that, that, uh, not, uh, having competitive solicitations is, uh, categorically the wrong thing to do, I will say that this negotiated agreement, which was not competitively solicited, but was negotiated in a no-bid agreement saves our residents three million dollars over ten years. And that's valuable and it's, it's evident in the chart that you just saw where we're second to the bottom, even before the other cities have had to increase their prices. So I think this is a wonderful deal. I know it's going to be contentious over time because people may want to make hay out of it. But I'm thrilled that we've saved our residents three million dollars. We've, we've enhanced services by having the roll-offs into the alleys. And I get it. I mean, I'm in the energy industry and we're continually trying to figure out how to message, when to message. So while I, I, I agree with you, um, Mayor, that, that Waste Management fumbled it a bit, I appreciate their effort to try to right the ship and to get everything going. And I truly appreciate their quietly accepting additional trash from all of our residents without saying that that was a change in behavior. So thank you for your, your graciousness in this. And in so doing, I'm happy to make the motion if we're ready for it.
I just, uh, Tim, may I please make a, a clarification? Just so those listening, Mayor, you talked about Athens having a CPI increase. I want to make sure everyone understands Athens is their street sweeping services. Okay, I just want to make that clear. Waste Management is trash pickup.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Robin. Yeah, that, so the way, so the street sweeping went up by three point six one.
Mayor, council, I, I would recommend, um, that you take the two resolutions separately, twenty-one thirty-nine first.
Thank you. I appreciate that guidance because I was going to ask it if what.
I was going to ask because I, we talked before and I said both, but we'll take one at a time under one. Uh, I just wanted to throw something out, Ms. Muse, that if you have a hotline to your, uh, bosses right now, could you ask them to forego the, uh, CPI for us? That would be so generous of you to show us such a olive branch to our community. Is that, is that something you could do there?
It's definitely above my pay grade.
I, I do appreciate that. And like I say, we need to move on, but, uh, I, I will say, uh, Mr. Davis, I appreciate your comments, but I am a RFP proponent, but with. But with also how our staff reviews everything, we have updated our purchasing policies and some of our other things that. We always have room for improvement and we always have room for an RFP, but uh, we will. Uh, align ourselves with staff to give us that information so we make the right decisions, so. Uh, being that said, um, we wanna, I'd like a motion on resolution number twenty-one thirty-nine, do we have a motion?
I move that the city council adopt or receive all written and verbal testimony. Regarding the proposed fee increases and we adopt resolution number twenty-one thirty-nine, declaring the results of the proceedings for the adoption refuse fees and. Oh, wait, I I needed to stop at the semicolon, sorry.
You're, you're, okay, so do we have a second on that short?
Second that motion.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Rossi.
Councilmember Lau.
Hi.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Hepper.
Hi. We moved to resolution number twenty-one forty, do we have a uh, motion to approve?
I'll go ahead and make that motion then that. Um, uh, no, no protest majority existed, so I. I propose that council adopt resolution twenty-one forty approving a rate adjustment. For refuse service provided by Waste Management of San Gabriel from one valley effect of July one, twenty twenty-one and January one, twenty twenty-two respectively.
Second, Mr. Crosby, we're second, roll call, Mr. Rossi.
Councilmember Lau.
Hi.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Hepper.
Yes. I want to thank staff again, I want to thank uh, Miss Muse and I want, I'm looking forward to a better twenty twenty-one with trash. There you go. We move on to. Other matters, item number eight, consulting services agreement with Civic Plus for design and implementation of a new city website, Mr. Rossi.
Yes, this is City Manager, this is to City Manager J.R. Reynolds, we'll handle this item, um, it uh, is coming to you as council will recall. Over the last year, there was um, a request by council and desire to expand on our communication effort efforts. As approving our social media as well as our internet presence. We did take on part of that this last year when we executed a contract. With uh, Trepey Smith as it related to the social media and outreach. Um, and the second step of that was going through a website redesign consideration. Um, JR has been tasked with handling that project and we'll go through the proposals and then the request for authorization, so, JR.
Thank you, uh, JR, nice to see you tonight, and thank you for sending the. The dollar values for all the other uh, proposals, it was very, it's very helpful for all of us, I think, to see what, where we're at and actually this was a little bit in the middle of the road, so it was a very uh. And it was, the staff was favored it, so thank you, please.
Absolutely, good evening, Mayor and council members, the city is seeking a complete redesign of its website. To enhance the user experience, simplify content management and provide improved citizen centric information as well as customer service to the community. A request for proposals was completed and seven responses were received. An evaluation committee consisting of staff from multiple departments appraised responses on preset criteria that was laid out in the request for proposals. From that process, the top three firms were invited to do a presentation and an interview process with the committee. Um, based off of that, uh, the, the committee unanimously selected Civic Plus. Um, not just because it was one of the lowest bidders, uh, but also because of their superior platform, uh, they have vast experience with a lot of other municipalities. Um, so they've really catered their products to exactly what we're gonna be doing and what are, what tools we need. Um, Solomon Grover with Civic Plus is actually participating as an attendee, so if there. Any technical questions, I would probably lean on him a little bit, um, just because he obviously knows his product a little bit better than I do. The proposed agreement itself will be for five years with the total year one cost just over thirty-four thousand dollars. And then going to slightly just under ten thousand dollars annually thereafter. The project appropriation is included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget, um, that was just passed earlier this evening. Staff is requesting the city council to approve resolution twenty-one forty-one, supporting the recommendation of Civic Plus. And authorize the city manager to finalize the agreement for website redesign services for five years. Under similar terms outlined in the master services agreement, as well as a statement of work included as attachments to the agenda report. And I of course uh, am available for any questions and uh, if we need to bring in Solomon, I will do that as well.
Any questions for uh, staff on this item before we go to public comment?
I can, I can wait till we do public.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay, we'll move to public comment, JR, do we have anybody on public comment for this side?
Did not have any previous requests for that, I'm looking, I don't see any hands raised and I'll check email right now as well.
I don't see any attendees with hands raised.
Still nothing received, sir.
We will close the public comment, move to council, council questions for staff.
So this, this may be a question more for Mr. Grover, but if staff knows, then I um, welcome the response. Um, I just wanted to know that with the revamp of the website, um, what is the uh. Accessibility gonna look like on mobile devices, because sometimes if if websites aren't, you know, uh. Properly, I I'm not gonna know the techni, you know, the technical word for this, but sometimes, you know, they come up funky on. Your mobile, uh, you know, device versus if you're at home on a computer, so. If we're gonna be doing this upgrade, I want to make sure that we're, you know, increasing the accessibility as much as possible and ensuring that that user experience is a positive one.
I'll give you the dumb answer and then we'll let Solomon.
Okay.
Much more educated way, um, it, it, it will be part of this process, that was a specific need and and request that we had. And um, Solomon, Solomon's team is very experienced with making sure that they are compatible, um, that's actually part of. Uh, what they showed us when they were um, doing the presentation and we've actually gone um, as staff and looked at some of the websites that they've done. Uh, for other municipalities with our cell phones, just to kind of, no, no offense, Solomon, we trust you, but we did go uh, and and verify that it worked as well, so. Solomon, I don't know if you want to jump into a little bit more of a detailed explanation.
Yeah, absolutely, so, um, good evening, Mayor and and Council and special shout out to all the dads out there, um, appreciate all, all that we do. Uh, so yeah, it's, we, we say it's mobile responsiveness when, when you're trying to do something on the phone, iPads. Um, so, a really important to any kind of interaction is to think of a mobile first strategy. You know, we have to assume people are gonna be sitting in their cars trying to do this. And we want to make sure that not only can it just be presented on a phone, but it has to really be easy for them to do as well. So, um, that's, that's the uh, really the theory that we're gonna take, we work with JR and the team. In revamping your website is look at your services and see what we can make, not only make it online and accessible. But um, just really delight citizens in in that journey and what they're trying to do business with. Not to sound too corny.
Thank you, I did appreciate the delight, so that's nice.
Most of us deal with with our cell phones because we're on the go and it's. It has to be because I constantly go on them and then sometimes you just hit a wall and it doesn't help you at all, so.
Yeah. Hey, scrolling back and forth trying to read something, so.
Can't open it up, it's not compatible or whatever, uh, any other questions for staff or Mr. Grover, yes, Councilmember Carter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask, um, Solomon, is, well, obviously, we have. Used the same website for many years, added so much more content that it is, in my opinion, it's very boggled. And um, I really would love a simpler way for the search. Item to happen, when you go to search, it's, I, I don't find it's easy to navigate. And so that's a main concern I'd have for the public.
That's a really excellent point, and I I say that Google has done a very good job of teaching us how to use the internet. So, um, kind of tying the previous question as well, when you go to a Civic Plus partner municipality. Almost always the search is gonna be at the very top of your device. But um, we have a very strong uh, internal X-ray of all of your uh, information on your site. We use a predictive search and um, even offering departments the ability to wait search results for their department first, if I'm. For example, if I'm in um, the PD section and I'm searching for something, it will pull up those most appropriate hits first and then look site wide. It does this in a fraction of a second, so I don't know it, but it's giving, it's trying to give me more relevant hits at the top.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Crosby? muted, there you go.
Um, part of our, our, our Parks and Rec um, department, a lot of our residents already have user IDs and their information. Is that going to change with the new platform, where they have to reestablish their, their um, their accounts?
Yeah, so, so the goal is to make it a really seamless transition, right? Um, we try to play very nicely with your existing vendors. Um, it, it's generally, uh, if we can get, you know, a list of email addresses and any kind of account information. We want to pull that in, but we also want to make sure that we're protecting their, their information and and not asking. Um, so generally when we're asking them to opt in on something, they'll get an email saying, hey, we want to sign you up for this or create your account for you. And then they'll just accept it as an email, um, and then they're good to go.
Any other questions, Mr. Davis?
Well, I guess I, I, I'm just reflecting on what I've heard tonight and and generally speaking, what I like to uh. Promote when it comes to websites and and visibility on uh, mobile apps and the, and the internet is that. You know, a delight is, is making it feel game like and a delight is making it feel like the. Onroads or the, 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 the inroads into the city and into services are much easier and it doesn't feel like you're fighting this. Burden of having to, you know, take an off ramp and then try to figure out how to navigate your way back on, so. I'm looking forward to your onramps and your game like uh, feel in this delight, uh, delightful engagement in our virtual city. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, on my behalf, I, I think also reading through your contract, um, your firewall technology and security is pretty uh. Up to par, and I think that's so important these days as we know that cities being hacked, businesses being hacked. You know, ship lines being shut down, oil being shut down, it's so important, so. We're not only, you know, buying a uh, a builder, but we're buying someone that's got the uh, firewall technology built into and as all my other colleagues have stated. Basically, our website is, I want to say the Fred Flintstone era, so I'm just gonna throw it out there, sorry, you know what? If, the last time I used it was with, it was COVID and it was, we had the shots in the parking lot over at the community center. I got on there for a resident and I totally was lost, so I called the city and, you know, our wonderful employees at the city, you know, were like. Okay, do this, do this, do this, this, like, okay, you know what? After the fifth step, you've lost me, I need to go in, like Mr. Davis says. Go in, it's like a game, boom, hit this, hit this, you pull it up, it's like, information should be. An, an infinitesimal, just little multi-seconds, no, that's the wrong word, sorry, Mr. Crosby, wrong word. But anyway, it should be fast, quick, and I, I, and I'm looking very forward to that and I'm really glad that you guys on board, I'm looking forward to seeing what we have and. A new website and just access for our residents, access for us to also as council and residents, so, thank you. Any other questions for staff or Mr. Grover?
Just, just one for you, Mr. Heppern, why did you have to put the Fred Flintstone theme into my head right now?
Oh, I'm sorry. I can hum it, yeah.
Jeopardy was one thing, but now I've got the Fred Flintstone theme in my head.
You're gonna be singing that for days, you know that.
Stick, yes.
Um, then we will move to, we need a motion for resolution number twenty-one forty-one. Who would like to make the motion?
Make the motion to approve resolution twenty-one forty-one.
I'll second.
Second, Councilmember Lau. Mr. Rossi, roll call.
Councilmember Lau.
Hi.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Hepper.
Hi. We move to, I am, thank you, uh, Mr. Solomon, Solomon Grover, thank you. Um, we move to item B, consider approval of the draft partnership agreement with Laverne Chamber of Commerce for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Rossi.
This item will be intro'd by Eric Shear and there's Leah who will take the presentation. Now that I did your introduction or your uh, your announcement for you, you can do your annual report.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, I am happy to present to you the annual partnership agreement with the Chamber of Commerce between the city and the chamber. Um, for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year, also want to thank the liaison committee of uh, Councilmembers Carter and Lau. Um, who uh, met with the city manager myself to go over this um, draft agreement before tonight. Um, so this year's agreement is basically a status quo agreement, it's very similar to previous years. Um, and with the one small exception, which is where the city has outlined some potential programs that we will engage in the next year. For business uh, assistance and recovery from COVID. Um, and so some of those, uh, and a lot of these programs will be dependent upon the limitations of the federal dollars that the city is expected to receive, which. I had, I know that we're inclined on sharing more of that information with the council in the coming months. But um, some of those might include partnering with the local bank for uh, assistance with business loans. Uh, potential utility uh, forgiveness um, payments, uh, a gift card matching for Laverne households. That would be um, only utilized in Laverne, so we'd be supporting our households as well as our city businesses. Um, as well as um, reimbursement for COVID expenses, so. Those are some of the things that we, we've in concept thought about and we will be bringing back more details of those programs. Back to the council, once we understand the limitations on those federal dollars and how we think these programs will be um, formed. But with that, I'll turn it over to Leah to talk a little bit more about what her plans are for the chamber for the next year.
Good evening, Council, thank you so much, um, and thank you so much, Mr. Rossi, for covering my announcement this evening. Um, for twenty-one twenty, for twenty twenty-one, the chamber met all four conditions as stated in the contract by the requested. Uh, deadlines and implemented all programs that were possible under COVID regulations. We hosted our annual teacher of the year award virtually this year, recognizing thirteen exceptional Laverne educators. Next year, we will be hosting our twentieth annual teacher of the year, we're very much looking forward to having that back again person. We were able to award five scholarships this year to twenty twenty-one graduating seniors. A total amount gifted of three thousand dollars and all funds were raised through voluntary contributions from our chamber members. We hosted our spring community yard sale in October this year. Again, it was minimized due to COVID regulations, but we were able to um, divert seven point three tons from landfills. Our Taste of Laverne event this year was drastically changed. We hosted our first ever restaurant week. Twenty-eight Laverne businesses participated at their individual restaurants and offered special menus. It was very well received by the restaurants as well as the community. Um, that being said, it actually will be added this year, so after. Our Wednesday, October twentieth Taste of Laverne event at Bracket Field. We will be having a mini restaurant week following that Thursday through Sunday. We started a Shop Laverne E-gift program. It's a virtual uh, gift card that can be used like a Visa or MasterCard. But only at participating Laverne businesses. We currently have fifteen vendors that are participating and now that we are able to do more face-to-face visits. We will be um, adding as many Laverne businesses as possible. And there is no charge for Laverne businesses to participate and they accept the card just like they would any other credit card purchase. We also held our second annual excellence in Laverne Business of the Year awards and recognized five outstanding businesses. And recognize them uh, on a video platform. Throughout this year, we kept our members and community up to date on the constantly changing and often confusing COVID regulations. As well as letting them know the resources available to assist them. We recently submitted a request to the Governor's Office of Emergency Services. For a supply of five thousand and ninety-five masks. That we will be able to distribute free of charge to our businesses so that they're able to make. The Cal OSHA regulations for their unvaccinated employees. Looking forward to twenty-one twenty-two, we will begin phasing back our in-person networking and other chamber programs throughout the summer months. And we are looking forward to introducing two new programs in. And we are looking forward to introducing two new programs in twenty-twenty-two. In the spring, we will host Love Laverne Day, and that will be a community-wide volunteer day where people, the community will engage in a variety of projects to support our nonprofits and service organizations throughout the city. And in fall of twenty-two, we will host our inaugural Leadership Laverne Program. And this is an immersive community leadership development program, offering a deep dive into the city of Laverne and to each participant's own leadership style and strengths to create exceptional future leaders for our city. We would like to thank City Council for their continued support of the Chamber of Conse- Commerce and constant support for our business community. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Lau and Councilmember Carter for monitoring this. I want to thank you, uh, Leah, for a great job, a job well done. Um, you have, uh, along with the city, along with our grants. I think we've saved our city and a lot of our businesses, and I, I want to say thank you to you and your staff and also to the chamber board. I think it's so important. And Mr. Shear also, I'm gonna include you in this too because you're at the forefront of this also with, with all of us and the city and public works to shut down D Street, which is just overwhelmingly support from all of our people. But I just want to say that with Marketplace and all the things that you've done and, uh, social media, you've done a, just an unbelievable job to really, to, uh, to, you know, make people survive, these businesses survive. And I, I just say that you, just a, a round of applause for all of you guys. I seriously, I can't thank you enough, seriously. Um, you've done just an exceptional job. It's also Mr. Russi yourself also. Um, just the whole staff, all the staff, because, uh, without our businesses, we are, we are not a, a city that's, that's healthy and, um, we really appreciate that. So thank you. Uh, staff, any questions for, uh, Mr. Shear or, uh, Ms. Skinner? Uh, Mr. Davis, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to know, um, what's next? I mean, the chamber and coordination with the city has just done so, so many amazing things this last year and the years prior leading up to that, that, that I'm just really excited about seeing what's gonna come next, because I, it, you know, the, the engagement um, has been so, uh, strong. I want to make sure that, you know, we find those companies that didn't quite do as well, that need an extra hand and, and find them to help them, because I think we can, we, you know, the chamber sees things with abundance, and for that, I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Uh, what's next? The COVID, uh, relief programs that we discussed really are focusing on that or the recovery programs. Um, I think they're truly just limited by the scope of what the federal government is going to allow us to do with those funds. Uh, we, we brainstormed for quite a while and came up with several ideas of how we can directly impact those businesses and make sure that they do survive and thrive.
Great, great, thank you.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes, Leah, hi. I wanted to commend you on this past year, it, actually, the eighteen months. It has been crazy for you, I know, and you have just worked so closely with the downtown merchants, foothill merchants. I've talked to some of them too, and they are just very grateful that things are moving forward. I love some of the new programs you have. You're always thinking, and that's what I love about you. You're always coming up with new ideas. I love your Laverne, um, Love Laverne Day. That will be spectacular. I'd even love to see our churches get involved with that. I think we can make that a truly cleanup day for Laverne and, you know, come together day. So I'd love to work with you on that. Um, also, the credit card, can you expand on that, on how you plan on getting the word out to the community? I love that idea. You know this community really wanted to give back and support our restaurants during the COVID time. So I really think we could get so many people involved in this program and more and more businesses will sign up. So, um, what's your plan on how to get the word out to the community?
Our main tool for communication right now is electronic, so via email and social media. So that is predominantly the tool that we're using. Um, again, depending on what we are allowed to do with recovery funds, direct mail campaigns could come into play.
But maybe even our message boards we can use too for the city to help. So.
I like that idea.
Mailings are so expensive and so many mailings are just trash. So, yeah, I think there's other ways too that we could do this without costly expenses. So we'll work together.
Thank you. And yes, we do actually plan on partnering with the churches for Love Laverne Day. That is a big part of that program.
Thank you, Leah.
Or Lau?
I just wanted to echo some of the comments, like Leah, you have been so, um, adaptable and flexible and so roll with the punches. Um, no matter which way things went, and, you know, there were definitely some roller coaster ride moments, but I think, you know, every time I saw you on a call or, you know, um, for our meetings, you always had a very optimistic viewpoint on everything, and it was always about what can I do to help? And I think that attitude and that, um, is such a big deal. I think it really made a huge difference because you genuinely care about what happens in our city and you genuinely care about, um, the people. And I love, you know, your, your growth mindset in terms of how do we partner with new people that we haven't partnered with before. Um, you know, some of the things that you were doing with the students with the university in terms of PR and marketing and, you know, the social media campaigning, um, as well as, you know, partnering with the law school to try to get some vital information out to the businesses, um, I think was incredibly forward-thinking. Um, and I am so appreciative that you are here doing so many things for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I look forward to another, uh, University of Laverne Law program again.
Yes.
Good.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Crosby, any questions or comments?
No, just thank you. Really looking forward to the leadership program that you're, you're gonna provide as well. So everything you're doing is, is amazing for all of our, our business owners and our residents.
Thank you so much.
Good. And if there's no other questions, I, again, thank you Director Shear. Thank you, Leah. You guys, like I say, you guys are doing a great job, fiscally responsible now, and the ship has been righted many years now, and, uh, I just, I look forward to the stuff we're gonna do now because we're opening back up, and I think the sky's gonna be the limit. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for all of us. And I, I also think too that I know that the, uh, ABC laws and, um, our governor's watching closely on, um, uh, restaurants, outside dining, and things like that. So, uh, I know that we have till, I think it's, uh, Mr. Russi, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, uh, the end of twenty-twenty-one right now for the extension of outside dining and some of the stuff for the ABC laws, but, uh, they're really looking seriously at those, so that's gonna change and morph. So hopefully, we can continually do what we're doing too. So, um, anyway, thank you very much. Um, do we have, you know what, have I done? I have not opened this up for any public comment, have I? We need to have a public comment, don't we? Do we have anybody for public comment, JR?
Uh, I've been monitoring, I haven't seen any hand raised yet, and we did not receive any requests to speak on this item.
I will go ahead and close public comment and come back to council. And do we have a, a motion? Counsel? For item, uh, for the consider approval of the draft partnership agreement between the Laverne Chamber of Commerce for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Well, I'd like to make that motion to approve resolution number twenty-one forty-two, approving the Laverne Chamber of Commerce partnership agreement, which includes programs and funding for a twelve-month term in the amount of forty thousand in incentive programs.
You have a second?
Okay.
Lau, thank you. On that, roll call, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau?
Aye.
Councilmember Crosby?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Heffer?
We will move to, thank you, staff. Thank you, Leah. Thank you, Mr. Shear. Uh, we move to public comments and communications. Yes, oh, you wanted to make, yes.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, as, uh, everybody is fully aware, um, June fifteenth was the day of kind of the reopening of the state and some of the, the restrictions and the tiering that had been in place. Um, and I just wanted to share with the community some of the changes that, uh, have occurred or are occurring as a result of that in city operations. Um, City Hall, Public Safety Lobby are all now open for regular business hours. Uh, City Hall is eight to six, and DD, I believe, is eight to five, if I'm not mistaken. So, um, as, as is consistent with protocol, just a reminder that unvaccinated should still wear their mask while inside. We will still leave at City Hall if you've come by. You know, we have a concierge out, uh, right at the front lobby to greet you. We will still have that person in place, um, for the foreseeable future, just to help facilitate people coming in. Um, Recreation, um, Community Services, um, will have their, uh, access through the, the, um, east side of City Hall. Um, so if you're going to get your Fourth of July tickets, um, for the fireworks show, please go through the Community Services door, um, around the, uh, east side. Um, also, the Community Center will be opening for recreation classes as of July twelfth. So we're really excited that we'll start to reintroduce people back into our recreation facilities. Um, that'll typically be Monday through Thursday that those activities will be going on and primarily in the afternoon. The, uh, only thing out there that's challenging for us and, you know, just been in discussion with council is, uh, bringing the public back for our, our council meetings. And I know the council, as well as I, um, as we discussed, are anxious to do it, but we also recognize we want to do it when we can safely accommodate everybody that wants to come into our meetings. And, you know, we are challenged by the size of our council chambers, which really limits, given the, the need to still have some amount of distant, uh, social distancing in place. Um, so we're working on that over the coming months to try and make that happen as soon as possible and want to encourage the community just to be patient with us as we try and find the ways to, to do it in a manner where everybody that wants to come into the meeting can. Um, because the minute that we do move inside and have, um, in-person meetings, we will lose the Zoom functionality, and the only thing we'll be able to do is webcast. So it would be a lot more, it would be more clumsy than what we're doing in this forum, um, for some people, and so we're just trying to be fair enough with everybody. So just wanted to share that, uh, uh, for the council's benefit as well as the community and look forward to seeing you, uh, come by City Hall and say hi. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russi.
And, um, got a reminder, sorry, that we will also, in addition to the fireworks show, concerts in the park, we will be, um, planning for some of those in late July, early August, as well as movie in the park. Um, we do not have a definitive schedule yet, but we will be pushing that out on social media. So we will be putting some of those programs in place as quickly as we can get them scheduled. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder.
Thank you very much. We will move to public comments and communications. JR?
Mr. Mayor, we do have, uh, at least three calls that are ready to go. Uh, the first one we have is Brittany Allison.
Good evening, Ms. Allison. Is she?
Good evening. Hi, thank you so much for taking my call and, uh, for your public service, um, to the entire temple. There's two quick topics I wanted to bring up. The first is, um, my desire to express my disappointment in the divisiveness that I see in my community. Um, so many of us note the ineffectiveness and the lack of meaningful dialogue, um, and the polarization at the national level. But of, of course it's just there because I see it in my very communities. Um, I, I hear the vilification of people who have differing opinions. Um, and, and I just wanted also to remember that we're talking to people, we're talking to our neighbors, and it's very unlikely that anybody expressing their differing viewpoints does so because they wish to undermine what City of Laverne is and represents, and that we can accomplish so much more if instead of picking sides and putting other people into a side that you get out, we can discuss the merit of differing viewpoints. We haven't heard as much of it tonight, but so frequently when we're discussing Fire Station Three, it, it's not horrible to consider fiscal responsibility. It's also not horrible to want your closest fire station reopened for increased safety. But because we pin each other into this position, we don't discuss what these quality of service maybe has occurred, or how high of a risk are these low-frequency, high-risk incidents? And what options do we actually have for sustainable funding? I'm just really sad and sorry to continue to see people doubling down in their corners rather than coming together. And my second point is about the accessibility of the man. I just heard that when you decide to open up into person, you will be shutting down the Zoom function, and that means I won't be able to call into future of, uh, meetings. When you do decide to return to in-person meetings, I ask that you find a way to maintain the increased accessibility that this format provides for people who are homebound or wish to continue staying home for health reasons, or people who, like me, are listening to this meeting on your bus while I get my kids ready for bed and sneak out while there's screaming behind the door. Um, I will not be able to continue the engagement that I wish to have in my community if you increase this functionality. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allison.
Mr. Mayor, I have Thomas Allison on the line.
Mr. Allison, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, I got, just like my wife, I got a couple things I'd like to raise. Um, mine pertaining more to the budget. Uh, first, the, I like to ask what the imperative of the culturally bent function of the Community Services Department is. And then secondly, um, I want to talk briefly about revision of public safety. Uh, but on the first issue, uh, I looked at the Community Services aspect of the budget, and it looks like culturally bent is a pillar of the department, but it's nowhere mentioned in the long-term objectives or the operational plans of the actual department itself. So there appears to be some strategic misalignment in that particular issue that I would basically just want to be considered by our staff. The second thing with regard to public safety, um, in this year's budget, the Police Department talks about providing excellent quality service, while the Fire Department talks about providing or maintaining a viable level of service. And I don't think this balance is appropriate for our aging community. So what I would like to do is invite city staff and the council to revision, public safety as a whole, like, reimagine the entire thing. What disparities or scale economies could be created between police, fire, and paramedics that could consolidate resources in their departments? I see fire has this listed as one of their strategic objectives, but police does not. How can fire and police work with other departments to alleviate their budgetary strain, uh, before bringing in new hires? How can residents and neighbors be empowered to work with police and fire proactively to secure our own health and safety? What non-enforcement quality life calls can be responded to by departments other than police to alleviate overtime needs of our police department? These are just a few among many considerations I'd like the council to take into consideration. As somebody who's embarrassingly due both fire and police far more in a book, or far more than is appropriate, I can attest they both provide bad quality services and bad response time. Um, but I do think that with some creativity, we can probably put this public safety issue to rest. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Allison.
Mr. Mayor, I'm bringing in, uh, Pam Berry. As part of the panel.
Good evening, Ms. Berry.
Muted.
They're unmuted.
Ms. Berry, you're, you're muted?
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Nice, good evening.
Good evening. I am, um, currently mobile, uh, using that mobile device as, uh, we hope to have for our new website. So, um, I'm gonna make it real quick here. Uh, number one, city manager is, uh, over ten miles from City Hall versus the five per municipal code. He's got thirteen months notice, no fines or consequences. Residents therefore deserve the same twelve months to rectify municipal code violations with no fines. There should be no special treatment. And since family and friends from outside of Laverne are not allowed to the Fourth of July fireworks, does Mr. Russi get a pass for that one too? Number two, ninety thousand dollars a year, a hundred and eighty thousand for two years, is a steep bill for PR, which doesn't even include the website. I thought that was part of it. So with the lack of funds and staffing, Station Three, uh, this kind of frivolous spending needs So with the lack of funds and staffing, Station 3, this kind of frivolous spending needs to stop. We don't need PR. That's for you guys. That's not helping the residents. As far as Station 3, it's six mi- six minutes from a lot of the northeast city residents from Station 2. If they're on a call already, it's nine or more minutes from Station 1. So that's a long time for somebody to be waiting for help. Station 3, if open, can give them two to three minutes for rollout. Lives are in the balance, so I really appreciate Mayor Pepperin's plan to open Station 3 as soon as possible. Number three, meetings need to be wide open to the residents by July 7. Many residents do not have access or ability to Zoom. I see that it is valuable and we can do hybrid. It's possible to do. Fontana is open this week. San Dimas is open. The people want to come back to public hearings, so they are actually accessible. Hybrid with Zoom open July 7. And last but not least, I noticed recent city council meetings minutes are extremely vague on the public comment. They don't even include the comment of a council member interrupting a public comment. So please keep the minutes honest and transparent, even if it's not pretty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. JR.
Three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have Brenda Cardenetti on the line.
Hey, Ms. Cardenetti.
Hello, my name is Brenda. The reason for my call today is because I have been, it has been brought to my attention that the City of Laverne is trying to get rid of the fire. Listening to me. Not only because, you know, the fire, fire season is coming around and we obviously need those people around. Me, I'm actually a EMT student. And I have hopes of one day working for my city, you know, and my favorite cities. So it's very concerning that you want to shut that down. I do not agree, and I don't think it should happen. That is my comment.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, we have Rick Bowen joining the panel.
Good evening, Mr. Bowen.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, a couple of comments and announcement. Number one, LV3C, the Laverne Coalition of Concerned Citizens, meeting this Thursday night. We've invited all council, but due to prior engagements, only one or one has accepted Mr. Davis. And we've invited the mayor and the police and the fire to give us an update of, you know, post, post-COVID Laverne. So we look forward to that. Also, I want to throw out a thank you to the to the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, they opened up the streets a little over a year ago and and they look like they've just been super supportive and keeping the restaurants around. So Leah is certainly to be congratulated there. Lastly, or a couple of things based on what Pam just said. Why aren't we having an open meeting? The state has opened it. As far as I read, the only limitations are on some meetings that are 10,000 people and 5,000 people, and they've eliminated the mask mandate and they've eliminated social distancing. So I just heard the city manager talk about proper social distancing within our chambers. But as far as I know, unless it's Cal OSHA, there are no regulations. So why doesn't the city manager want to open up our city meetings? And along those lines, I just noticed that on the Waste Management presentation, the two ladies were in the the offer or in one of the rooms in the in the city, and they're three feet apart, no masks. So there doesn't seem to be an issue there. So why can't the citizens partake? That doesn't make any sense. And the very last thing is, based on the conversation last time where where Mr. Crest said that the mileage didn't really matter because it was, quote, "close enough" to use an attorney term. I asked for a CPR or a CPRA request, which is California Public Records, for Mr. Russi's contract. And I just received a note today that due to COVID-related issues, they cannot supply me with that and that they would do it, they're working on it and would get it to me sometime in the future, not stating any kind of a date. I find it amazing that the city can't provide a citizen with the current manager's contract. So maybe somebody has a comment about that. Let's open the city. Let's open the meetings. Let's get back to normal. And everybody should abide by the law, including the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Mr. Mayor, could I just jump in and
Yes, please.
Say that the city manager's contract is on the website. And Mr. Bowen's public records request involved that, but many other issues as well. We're working on a response. He'll get a response in a timely manner.
Thank you, Mr. Crest. Anybody else? JR?
No, sir.
Let's give him 15 seconds. We will go ahead and close public comments and communications and move to council comments. Who would like to start? Councilmember Carter.
Yes, I will. I want to first start off with letting you all know that I attended a opening of Mount San Antonio College, their facilities that they have over on the south side of the complex. And what they did is, it was ready last year, a lot of the football field, but because of COVID, they couldn't open it and do a, you know, ribbon-cutting event. And then they, we also did a groundbreaking ceremony too for some new buildings. I really would love for everyone to go over to Mount SAC when you're driving over in that area just to see the beautiful complex that is growing over there. Mount SAC, I went there back in the 70s, and it's changed so much. And it's just absolutely beautiful. The bridge they have going over is a pedestrian bridge. It's just beautiful. The complex off to your left, when you drive down, you'll see the giant screen that just, they had graduation the day that we were there that night. And it was just absolutely beautiful. It's breathtaking. And Mount San Antonio College is our district community college. So I encourage everyone to take us, you know, time over there to drive down Temple Avenue, and you'll see it off to the left. The other item I'd like to share with everyone is I want to make it very clear for the public to know. And Wendy sits on the Fourth of July committee with me, but I want to make it very clear that if you want to buy tickets for the Fourth of July show, fireworks show, you have to go to the community center. You pay cash, you come in, you buy your tickets, and we will not be selling at all at the gate tickets for that evening. So you must pre-buy these tickets, okay? So that's my report, and thank you. It was a wonderful meeting. We got a lot accomplished tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. And Mr. Crosby.
Councilmember Carter, I too graduated from Mount SAC as well. Together, we did it together.
I think I'm a little older than you, Rick.
It's okay. I just want to say, a lot of information came tonight and looking forward to where we can all meet in person as well. There, there, and there are other guidelines and spacing. I know San Dimas is only having, allowing 50% capacity inside their their chambers right now too. So it's it's not just open up for everyone in these cities that are that are that are spread out there. I'm looking forward to Fourth of July and the events of Fourth of July there. And if Councilmember Lau, when you speak, if you can go over some of the events and some of the events that are not happening so that that residents are notified too. I know that you have them. Sorry to put you on the spot, but really looking forward forward to that and and seeing all the residents and the motorcycles going down our parade route. One of my favorite favorite pieces. So and and everyone have a safe, safe Fourth of July as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Councilmember Lau.
Yes, so I just wanted to start off by, you know, thanking staff as always for putting together, you know, all the information for our meetings and for getting that out there. Really appreciate that. Also wanted to to give a shout out to the Fourth of July committee. You know, I think it's really a function of, you know, I'm not saying that because I'm on it. I'm saying it because we have some amazing staff folks and amazing community members who are, you know, really invested in trying to make this a community. And and, you know, I want people to know that although we won't have all of the events that we're used to having, obviously, we're having much more than we did, you know, last year in the midst of the pandemic, but that did not come without some, you know, really meaningful dialogue and discussion amongst the volunteers and the staff about, you know, how could we proceed as safely as possible while still giving everybody an opportunity to celebrate the holiday? So we will not be having the pancake breakfast. So if you're used to, you know, going over and grabbing pancakes with the Boy Scouts and whatnot, they won't be able to do that this year. Or they won't be doing that this year, but they will be selling, I believe, water at the fireworks show. So, you know, be on the lookout for a Boy Scout if you're going to be attending. And to echo Councilwoman, Councilwoman Carter's comments, don't wait till the last minute for these tickets. You know, we did have to restrict, you know, some of the number, the numbers of them. And, you know, it is cash only. So I know if you go to warehouse, you're used to the cash-only policy. If you go to Roberta's Village, you know, this is not new to many of you that are longtime residents, that that we are still a cash city. So but, you know, just please remember to do that ahead of time so that you don't get caught up and go, oh, gosh, I I missed my opportunity to to get the tickets. The parade route, you know, will be the same. You know, big, huge thank you to the the folks working from the police side of things to make sure that the route is, you know, that we can maintain the route, that we would have appropriate staffing and people available. Again, very huge lift on that end as well. So, you know, can't say it enough. You know, thank you to all of our our staff and our folks for for really pulling it together to make this happen. And last but not least, I think, actually, two things. A couple weeks ago, I think, gosh, it was last weekend, not this past weekend, but the weekend before Laverne had their, the University of Laverne had their in-person graduation for the spring class of 2020, the winter class of 2021, and the spring class of 2021. And so it was held over at the 66er Stadium, and it was the first time in obviously a very long time that people could gather. It was still, you know, people still had masks and whatnot, and we had to limit capacity. But I think, you know, it's a huge milestone. And I think about the Benita grads and I think about the, you know, the grads from, you know, other colleges and other, you know, whether you're graduating from, you know, middle school or whatever it is, but you're, you know, some of these celebrations that we take for granted is, you know, as business as usual, didn't get to happen for a lot of folks. So I'm really glad to be able to see that we are being able to move to that stage. I will still, you know, caution folks to be as safe as you can, you know. You know, outdoors is better than indoors. Mask if you're going to be in close proximity, social distance. You know, and so belated happy birthday to all the dads out there. I hope many of you had the opportunity to celebrate in person with your dads. I got to see my dad, but it was, you know, it's it's a little bit different when you have to go visit in a convalescent center and it's one at a time. So, you know, he's been over COVID for many months now, but the complications that have resulted from that have been long and ongoing. And so I, you know, I do welcome the opportunity for us to open up, but I do still encourage, you know, folks to be as safe as possible to do what is necessary, not just to protect yourselves, but those around you because although you may not fall, you know, victim to a bad case of COVID, you don't know who might. So hopefully, we're we're getting out of the woods, but stay safe and be kind.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. So let's see, last week ago, Monday, I got to meet with the Public Bank Pomona Valley Study Group, which isn't an official action as a council member, but I would encourage those listening that are interested in understanding more about public banking to get involved. I think it is potentially the future for our community. Then Wednesday night, Mayor Hepperton and I celebrated the our public safety departments, both police and fire, and saving a beloved neighbor and track coach and former mail carrier Dave Perron. I'll let Mayor talk more about that. So we shared that that platform, and we're going to get to share again coming up this Wednes- is it Wednesday or no, Thursday, with the LV3C meeting. I'm not sure that I'm going to have much to add to our mayor's comments that evening, but I'll do my best and represent council as we want to only have two people there so we don't traipse into a Brown Act violation or anything like that. And lastly, with Councilmember Carter and I would like to agendize at the next meeting on July 6, a resolution and a proposed plan to turn Laverne's voting into district voting. We hope that that can bring a little more harmony and togetherness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you all, council, the some very important items. And thanks for the Fourth of July committee. I think it's so important that we're having that this year, our fireworks and our parade, even though we're reduced, we're still having it. I think that's wonderful. So kudos to all of you and all the staff too to put that together. Also, as Councilmember Davis had stated regarding the, for Mr. Dave Perron, the school district put on a celebration and awards and medallions to three of the coach, trainer, and then I think an assistant coach, and one was ULB. But actually, the staff, Dave Perron's son actually found that his father had basically collapsed, and the staff at Benita High School immediately started CPR. Within two minutes, three police officers arrived to the scene and they brought the their AED device and basically got him back up, got him breathing, got his heart started. And then, and then when that happened, we had our firefighters arrive and hook them up for a defibrillator. And, you know, it's just a success story. Doesn't always happen that way, but the quick response, the talented personnel that we have were able to save, save his life. That man has been a coach at Benita for so many years and been just a, you know, an icon for a lot of the students that have gone through Benita for many, many years. So we thank, thank our staff, our police and fire, and the staff of Benita. It was, it was a wonderful, wonderful celebration. And and Dave looks great. He's doing really well. So thank you very much. And then also, I want to thank all of our staff, the budget. This, this was a huge package to to put forth between our budget and all the different resolutions and Waste Management. And I know these contracts are, there are a lot for us to look at, but our staff does a tremendous job to present them to us and gives us the information so we can sift through it. I also wanted to make a note tonight. There's been a lot of social media out there regarding kind of picking out our employees that that they're kind of rogue and do their own thing when it comes to policy or or procedures. And I want to make it abundantly clear. We have some of the finest employees around. Our policies and procedures are made by council and management, city management. They follow those procedures to the T. I mean, we have probably one of the cleanest-run cities around as far as internal, and they follow the procedures and policies. It's up to us if we don't care for the procedures or policies to make changes on those, and that's through a process. But our employees do exactly what the procedures and policies state, and they go way above and beyond that. I was here this weekend looking at the audit demands. There were three employees in there working on Saturday. Dedicated staff, they're on salary, they're dedicated staff, and I personally appreciate it. And I just want to know the residents out there and our council that they're tireless across the board, and they do a fantastic job, and they follow the rules to the T. So I just want to make that abundantly clear. And for the social media out there, you are incorrect. They are following procedures and protocols and policies. And until we decide something's not working right, we'll make the change from council down to city management, and that's how it works. So I just want to make that clear, and I do appreciate all that all of our city staff does. They're always there, especially during COVID. Now that we're opening back up, it's been a rough road, and they've they've just done an exemplary job. So thank you all. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, Mr. Russi, we have a closed session. Is that correct? With that, Mr. Russi, we have a closed session. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, we have a need for three. Um, and let me just, before I go into that, thank you um for making that compliment to the staff. I know it uh, it is very much appreciated. So thank you for that. Um, the three closed sessions that we have is, one is under Government Code Section 54957 dot 6, and that's conference with labor negotiator with all the represented groups listed. The second is to meet under Government Code Section 54957 dot 6, meet with labor negotiator um to discuss unrepresented employee, that position being fire chief. And the third closed session is conference with legal counsel under existing litigation. Um, and it's under Section 54956 dot 9 subsection A, um, cases involving Save Our Laverne Environment, City of Laverne. Um, and there will be nothing to report out of any of those.
So we recess in a closed session. There will be reports coming out, who will not report out. So basically, our next uh regular scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, July 6, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Thank you all. The meeting is adjourned at 8:22 PM. Thank you all.